Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, July 11th at 7:30 in the evening. Glad to see everybody made here. Thanks so much. What time did I say? Hey, you know.
How many years is this been?
I'm in Hawaiian time. No, that's middle of the ocean time. I don't know if Mike or... Oh yeah, it's the other way. It's Arizona time. Okay, well, hey, we're here and there's daylight. Let the record show that everybody is here. And let's take a look at the minutes from the 27th. Are they... do they meet with your approval? The motion's second. All voters say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Public comment. We have a request to make a public comment today by Mr. Bo. And good evening. Step right up to the microphone, please. And we have three or four minutes. About how much? About three or four. Yeah, I'll work through. Good. So I'm Jamie Bo. I've lived here a long time, so... Can I look around? Look under your desk. Sorry. Anyway, so I went down to the park. Here, I go down to the park every year. And I just noticed this booth. And I think that's a handout that the vendor... And I thought, well, 30 years ago, probably had its discussion, but times have changed a bit. I thought, well, it doesn't look good. It's insensitive. And so I'm going to have to say something. So I took some pictures and started doing a little research. And part of this outline here is my logical instruction and argument I might make for why this is a good thing. But first, I found in western days, and both there's some administrative structure to deal with this issue. So right off the bat, okay, but I don't think I have full thought. So it's kind of like a tributary. You know, is this kind of thing intimidating or unsuitable, et cetera? So then I thought, okay, well, what's the problem? The image of this competitive battle plan. And in the last couple of years, it's become a... And there was a year or two, I was starting to pull back the grounds, the license plates, et cetera. So I, you know, I had some pictures. Does this image really talk to white supremacy, KKK? For better or for worse, no, it's fair dot. It is. It's part of the rank. So, well, again, I think I'm good fitting there, at least that's what I... Based on my research. Am I crazy? Is it might be too oversensitive? And in fact, in Section 8 here, when Alabama's health program, et cetera, they're all pulling this thing off their public places. Retailers are starting to pull it off their shelves. And they're in the business of making money, so they made this calculation that it's not profitable to carry this stuff. And then Section 8 here, I just add, Oregon's interesting history. Nasty, but a speaker of racism, unique Oregon. Probably, I don't know if you know about it, but we used to have this school law. And we're the only state to do it, you know. So Oregon, Oregon, the only ones that happened. And because it was horrible about the 14th amendment. And we had like a high KKK membership in the 20s. Again, the highest of the capital in the country. There we go. We're special. So then, yes, then this... What this discussion I had with the vendor was really a police discussion. You know, I just, you know, posed the question, like, why is someone using... They're offensive. And I go back and forth. And he called me a snowflake. And I didn't, you know, that was a thing. I don't know. That's odd. I said, you know, this is offensive and you're bull. He goes, oh, you're a snowflake. Okay, so the wife and I went back and had a beer and a brew there. About the snowflake comment and the research that actually is a thing. I was insulted. So you don't say, well, now I'm getting the idea of what this person's doing. I think what they're doing is they're selling white supremacy, a burrito of white supremacy wrapped in a tortilla of southern Americans, if you will. And it's kind of the way I see it. So now, moving forward with the western days committee, do you want to keep giving them, maybe a license for these people or prevent, you know, like this Biden with the council, you know, some recognition that this is... Doesn't make the city look bad. Thank you for taking the time to come in. And council members, I got this a little bit in advance, so I talked to the city manager. And we're going to have our city attorney, because it's a... This is an event that takes... Fourth of July is a city event that takes place in a city park. And there's some rules that... There's some constitutional issues that we're going to need some advice on. I had some people approach me during the Fourth of July. And I also had a chance to visit with the vendor. And I get, let him have my personal opinion, but we were not going to agree. And so what I've asked, unless there's objection, is we're going to have our city attorney take a look at what the parameters are, what we can and can't do. These kind of issues have come to the forefront. We are not alone in this. And so we're going to get our city attorney. It's going to take a little while to... There, we're going to have some other stuff. But get back to us with what we can, what we can't do, what the future might hold. Unfortunately, we have some time before next Thursday, Fourth of July. Does that sound okay with everybody?
Yeah, we're just...
Thank you. This all communicated with the western day committee. Right.
Yeah, at the end, you... Western Days Commission is a charm in the city. So whatever you decide in terms of what is appropriate policy and not appropriate policy, they'll have to follow. But you know, one, you'll have a legal discussion. And then you can have a policy discussion if you wish, based on what your choices are.
Yes. After having been on the pop festival committee for many years, we had an issue like this with a vendor. And it wasn't politically based, but it was selling things that did not lend to the atmosphere that we were trying to create. And we used it as a prerogative of the committee to not invite that vendor back again. And when they applied, we told them very clearly what things were not appropriate. And again, we use the atmosphere that we're trying to create. This does not lend to it.
So we'll look forward to hearing that. And if you'll fill out all the speaker cards with Karen, then she'll have a way to get ahold of you.
Okay.
And so you can keep it informed.
Sure.
Thank you for taking the time to come visit with us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And enjoy the evening. Councillors, what I'd like to do is... We do not have it on the agenda, but it seems like this would be an appropriate time. We have folks from the western days who want to give an after-action report. And I know they probably would not like to sit here for the whole evening. And so unless there's objection, I'm going to let them, at this point in the meeting, come forward and give us the what happened. So please, good evening and welcome to council.
Thank you, Congress. Hi. As per your request, I'll keep it short and sweet here. Just to throw out some numbers to you guys. Our attendance this year on the third, paid attendance into the park after the gates opened, was 7,268. And on the fourth was 17,410, which was right in line with our projections being that the Fourth of July was on a Tuesday night. This year, people had to work by the same anticipated seeing a bigger showing on hometown day, which is what we saw. I would like to give a huge shout out to Sergeant Manuelos. A big win for us this year was the security presence in the park. It was unlike any other year I had ever seen before. He did an outstanding job with the resources that he had to use and the additional funding that we were able to secure for him. It made a huge presence in the park, which made for a very quiet event for us overall. Coming for the year, which we are looking forward to making some changes down there in the park. I had the opportunity to meet with Karen yesterday. We have a huge need for volunteers. I'm sure we all hear that every day with every event going on. So we have an action plan to recruit some volunteers, starting with an information meeting set here in August. And we've already talked with the faith up looking for some volunteers. And we have a few people on board that looks like they're going to be an asset for us. We'd like to utilize those volunteers for different aspects out in the park. This year, on the third, I happen to be down there by myself. Just certain circumstances that happen. It's too big an event to have one person in the park handling everything. It was very taxing. I'm very tired. So we're hoping to bring on some different committees to handle maybe some more festivity in the park. Bring in people to do some decorating to make it look more like the event that it needs to look like. But without volunteers, we can't do anything more than what we already have. So that's our focus this upcoming years. Working on getting more volunteers and making it a better event next year.
Well, on behalf of the council, I want to thank you and everyone associated, Paul, that helped make it happen. As you and I spoke earlier, that I have a little bit of personal knowledge, as many of the folks up here do, of what it takes to do that through a multitude of days. I just really want to thank you. It is really wonderful to watch so many people having a good time in so many different ways and over so many days. And a park, you know, almost 20,000 people for fireworks, and it's just...
A little fun. Sorry, but a little fun.
So thank you, and I hope you can have a restful evening.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. Mr. City Manager, I think... Is there anybody else that has a public comment? Let's see if they're stepping forward, Mr. City Manager. It's up to you now.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. So just a few things on my list. As we do the... We're getting down to the home stretch on "Indy Goes Dark." We have... We are now down to tent sites only. We've sold all the drive-in tent sites, R10 and all the RV sites. So those are all booked in full. We are pretty close to breakeven already. And we're expecting a pretty good revenue stream yet off of vendors, the beer sales and the like. So we think we'll have a pretty good, you know, financial outcome from the event, which is good. It's been a long haul, and people put a lot of work into it. And we're hoping that we're fully prepared and no... Don't be surprised. We just want to hope they're managed as well as possible. So it's been good. Anyway, that's ongoing. Indy Landing, we're also independent land. We're also getting down a little bit to the home stretch in terms of the public infrastructure work. We are hoping we should, based on the schedule that we have in front of us now, see sidewalks and landscaping completed by the end of this month. Lot E, which is relatively known as Lot E on our side, is the gravel parking lot that we have adjacent to the police department here that will be upgraded to an hyperpublic parking. Should be completed in August, as well as final lift of pavement and striking of roads. And then finally, our contractor will take off for a short bit, come back in mid-September and finish the work in the park when all the events are done. So as not to interfere with the event planning that we have in place. So we're, you know, most of the project is done. Most of the money's been paid. And the work is, it looks like it's coming to a satisfactory closing. So that's ongoing. So nothing to prove to advise you, but yet on the private side, I think we're still waiting on our final approval before, you know, basically kick off the contract, if you will, from the state. So the next few days, I will be away at OCC mayor. And we will be having one of the things, I'll be facilitating a presentation, which will include Arubio. And you'll see much of that presentation this evening that the city managers will be seeing. And it's just a discussion of community engagement. Where we have been, where others that are doing this work in the valley are at, and just what, you know, where that particular expertise is going and how that's developing, you know, services, things throughout this, throughout the list of valley and probably going statewide. We are... And feel free to interrupt now. I'm just going to choose a slide from my list. So we are going on to the next steps of the branding project, which is, we have had a meeting with our, between our parks master planners and our branding folks to marry the new brand with the trail program that we have in place and the science program that we've gone on in our parks master plan. So we are going to begin developing a number of trail signs, basically trailhead signs. And some of the banners that we hope to put up on the new standards on Hospulane, since as well, I can find those standards in something. And so we'll start with some of those that we've seen in the branding package already. So that should give some color and some welcoming to that area and certainly along with any future marketing and development that side. And as well, putting in the information for our trails, locations, information about those trails, et cetera. So we're moving that forward. So we are unfortunately wrapping up our services that we have with our two rare placements in Lee and Madi. We did, as I mentioned before, again, renewed contracts from Maricor on those seats. So we are... Sean will be spending a fair amount of time together with, I think, councillor, I'm not sure if there are rules in the... It's in some of the interviewing. But there's a couple tales, I believe, for the two different positions. So that is ongoing. So we're excited to hopefully build on the progress we've made to date. Because always, there's always going to be a little bit of a lag on learning curve. Everything, we can build it up and take it to the next level. So Sean has been working together with Hy-Vac, I believe, to bring in a downtown airstream, airstream trailers. So that is... You should see a light array of airstream trailers come October, early October. Perfect timing to sort of continue on the summer season for some of our businesses downtown.
The Wally, Bynum, airstream trailers. I remember when I was a kid, they all came for a national convention in Salem. Those are the silver things.
They're beautiful trailers. I looked at them the other day. Way out of my price range. They're beautiful. They are beautiful trailers. And I love a city full of those. It is a national... It is part of the national conference.
They used to come to Pendleton as well.
There you go.
Park in the big, open, grassy lot of the mental institution.
So I can't fit them on both sides of the street, but we will line them up on one anyway. It's a little tight downtown, but it should be quite beside it. They're all pulled in and parked. And they'll be here for a few days, so they'll, you know, we'll also be hungry. And they'll hopefully, you know, want to do some traffic or whatever.
Can you give us the exact dates?
Do you have the exact date right now?
We're looking at the first weekend in October, the sixth, seventh, eighth. I think is that first full weekend, I appreciate Friday, eighth, sixth, through Sunday, eighth.
Yeah, it should be fun. Looking forward to that. A little bit of operational information, but you should probably know this anyway. We're just getting ready to start the process for an income survey. And the purpose of that is to try to qualify for some grant funds through community help and block grants, that they said that they still exist and hopefully will continue to exist. So we are starting that process. Is... You need to... Well, that's about enough information. Either we... Either our, the state of our income, the our community's income, it's a certain point which we qualify or doesn't, and we don't qualify. So we're hoping to be qualified for the program. This is a little bit of a... I know you... It's been a little while. We have to report back to you a little while on how this is going. We've attempted to implement the marijuana regulations with respect to the business licenses. Frankly, it's been... It hasn't been very successful to this point. It's extremely difficult for these folks to pull together the information that we need. And so we've been meeting internally with Chief, myself, Karen, to see if, you know, what we can do to make this process work a little better and get the information that you've asked for. But I figured if there's been a couple point, we're going to come back to you and say, we're going to suggest some amendments to the ordinance that you've adopted. In particular, when it comes to some of the background information that's inside, it's very tricky for these folks. So we'll come back to you. We'll give you a more thorough report. I just wanted to give you a heads up. We're giving the operations provisional okays to continue on doing what they do. They know they have to comply. They know they're ready. They know we're ready to sort of get our collective acts together. And I think right now, you know, it's... We're pushing the ball too hard on to make this work. So we'll come back to you with a more detailed report, but just swinging into the heads up.
This doesn't reference the marijuana operation at all, does it?
Well, are you talking about... That has its own set of conditions.
Right. Okay, so these are the downtown business registration.
Well, this is all, this is any marijuana business at all. But this is just the resolution of the business license. The conditional approval, the conditional... The approval that you gave to this type of road facility comes loaded with its conditions that you approved. It still has to apply with all those. And it's not even structured yet. So we'll have this resolved when we're through then.
But what you're talking about, the problems being part of, is different than that or the same as?
Well, it's different orders. So one is land use approval yet. This is the actual nuisance, the business license ordinance that you adopted.
That's what I thought you said. I just wanted to check that.
Business license resolution, actually. Would you expect to come back to us? We hope to have a meeting with all the parties probably in August. And so sometime, if we can get to hands-on time with yes quickly, or at least get to where we think yes ought to be, then we can come back to you with some proposed language in case we can get the attorney to modify it. So probably towards the end of August, maybe early September is what we're looking at.
And which parties are you talking about having meetings with?
Well, one, we want to get some more information from OCC and OHA as to what, you know, what is already required by them. So we get a better handle on that. What access they would, if any, give us, give to us to that information. They're still in their own evolutionary process. You know, the OCC is a lot more forthcoming with liquor license information than they are with marijuana license information. So that's really sort of where we want to start working. Find out what, you know, what we could do to not have to recreate the ball, you know, if you will. At the same time, we want to sit down with the industry folks here in town and say, you know, you're able to give us this pretty easily, but you're having troubles with this. Help us understand the buying. And let's see where we can get to yes. Because we know what, you know, basically, we think we have to understand what your intent and your intentions with all this. It's not to put them out of business, but it's certainly to have a, you know, a solid, active information. So if things go bad, we know where to go. So we just need to figure out how we can get to where you want to be a little more easily than we are right now.
I'm going to guess that we're probably not the only city dealing with things like this.
I'm sure you're right. The thing is, we don't have a standard ordinance that any one of the cities has adopted. So we don't have... If somebody else comes to a solution, normally we'll go over and we'll say to you, tell them what you did, so we can solve that one. We can't with this one, because you are, you know, we drafted from scratch. So we're going to have to find our own creative solutions to the issues that we've created with this.
I take great caution in being very visible in all of these actions and communicate with all the different people that have expressed an interest by their presence at meetings.
I'm not sure. I just want to tell me.
Well, you're talking about marijuana ordinance is correct. We've had a number of people that have come to visit us during council meetings that not just relative to Striker Road, but marijuana as a whole. And good public notice needs to go out about those galleries.
Yes, they won't be a secret. We recognize that this is not the subject that we wanted to revisit, but frankly, we need to.
Would it make sense, before you go to the attorney at 300 an hour, to come to us and say, hey, here's the kind of stuff. Could we change it like this and get the council approval before you go to the attorney?
And actually, that probably was what we were going to do anyway. So the attorney wasn't part of the plan that I might have to at this point. I think it's closer to 200 an hour.
Our new school superintendent also is from a state that has dealt with marijuana issues longer than Oregon has. And she might have some politicos that she could connect you with.
Yeah, again, this isn't really political question. This is an operational issue. We're just trying to figure out how to get to yes, you know, in a way that works for all parties. So we'll work it. We'll come back to you and describe in more detail what the issues are and what we'd like to consider in terms of changes.
Makes sense.
Speaking of school superintendent, we do have a meeting scheduled for Monday with a couple of us, self and a couple from your staff. And we'll go ahead and work on the all-hands meeting after that. But this is, she's just started this last Monday, so it was good to be able to get on her schedule quickly. But I figured we were better to do it during the summer before the kiddos come back. So she was very accommodating. We're going to go grab a bite and just get to know each other. I think we have a lot of things. Everyone joined them up together. You're going to have a couple more items. I just wanted to sort of preview what this is about just before the speakers come up. Arubio's going to give you just an update of where we are in the program. He'll give you a PowerPoint presentation, talk to that a little bit. Some of that will be things that you see a little bit, and some of that will be new. But it's just so, we've been a long time since we've reported to you about what's going on with that effort. So it's going to take a little bit of time, if you don't have that. And then the second item is to, is, is, seven, is... We are getting, we have talked to you over time over about wastewater projects that we have on the books in the captain improvement plan. We're getting close to where we're going to start presenting you a financial package. We need to do a couple of things. One, we need to get you up to date, you know, to speak with what the projects are about substantively, so we understand that. And so our engineer is going to walk you through that. He has a presentation as well for that purpose. And we also have our financial advisor, John Peterson here as well. And our engineer is down by heaven, right there. And John's over here from...
Did I get that right, Peterson?
Yeah. Anyway, he will give you a little bit of an overview where we're going, you know, what are our options financially. And in the meantime, you will hear from us that we are working to start working on the rate study because we need to understand how this all impacts the rates is projected going forward. So that's what you're about to hear. And I just wanted to lay that groundwork for you. You're not going to be asked to do anything. You aren't going to be asked to question as much as you like. And this is your chance just to get caught up on, you know, what we're doing for future meetings. So we're going to come to you with a decision package here. Decision package is not too far future, at least with respect to wastewater.
Okay. Questions for the manager at this point?
I have a couple going back to Independence Landing. Do you have a sense of ballpark of when we'll be hearing from Bowley or from the final approval on the current work that's being done?
Which work?
The sidewalks, the landscaping.
Yeah, end of the month, December.
Yeah, I gave you that on the sidewalks.
Right, but isn't there also an approval process that has to go through as well?
With the sidewalks and landscaping? That would, I mean, our approval.
Your approval.
I mean, our engineer has to accept the improvements for the engineer if the contract is paid.
Okay, so then my question would be, once we have signed off on the sidewalks, the landscaping, and so on?
We mean the city.
What other impediments are there or could there be to the developer beginning on their work?
Well, the only impediment is, when you mentioned, we're waiting on the Bowley determination. So that's it.
Okay.
So that would be going back and forth with them. And so they have, they operate at their own pace. We can't, if there's something we can do to change that.
Are we looking at six months or?
I would hope much sooner, but you know, I would hope within a month we should have, you know, at least another response. But we've had one response. We responded to that. And so we hope that their next response, you know, will be fairly due in fairly short order.
Okay. So if somebody asks...
Or as impatient as you are, I'm sure you'll...
What?
Or as impatient as you are, I'm sure you'll...
Yes, but if somebody were to ask me about when will the work by the contractor start, I could comfortably say sometime in the fall.
No. I don't know is the correct answer. But the next round of guessing would be comfortably, it would probably be spring. Hopefully, it would be late fall. We still have a whole round of planning and designing go through. We haven't gone through, we haven't gone through any of the planning process as yet. So we have a lot of buildings to look at, a lot of site to look at, a lot of infrastructure to look at, a lot of civil work to look at. So that hasn't happened yet. And that work has been commissioned because we're all waiting on the final determination to go forward.
And that being the Bowley determination.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Arubio, morning, or afternoon, evening. Howdy.
Morning. Good evening, Mayor, in the city council. I am Arubio Vialatas, and I am the community engagement officer, reporting of what I have worked, been doing, the work that I've been doing here in the city of Independence. So the whole present report that I'm doing, we will capture some of the highlights of the work engaging the community of Independence. And I can say that building trust with our community is a seven-day-a-week commitment. And I mean, have chances to meet with some people on Sundays, on Saturdays. And so it is a very great moment that I have with the community. So what we did in October was the Latino mixer. And we had Maria Chavez, Haroldson, and Johnny Haroldson. Um, they were the moderators, and we had a great turnout. There are forty-five people, professionals, and we have a conversation on demographics, education, and health within Latino community. We use the O C F, for the community foundation. Uh, they did a whole research on the census, and we use that as a platform to talk about the numbers and what, what is happening with the Latino community in the state and in the mission. So that was picture of, of them, the moderators, and there's another picture next, uh, that was where we had all people coming over and enjoying a small meal, and then we engage into that conversation. Um, the next, the next new way that I have, um, we, this was our second annual Dia de Muertos, the Day of the Dead celebration. It's a cultural awareness, um, uh, event, and the first event was organized by Elena Peña and Sergeant Manuel. And so I jumped in on the next one when I came in to work for you in August. And so I, I started to work with them, and we did our second event. I decided to, uh, go ahead next, uh, decided to put it in honor of Oscar Montemayor, and he's a professor, uh, with O S U. He encouraged a lot of leaders that go for higher education, and he passed away just about in October, close to November, so we did him in honor. Uh, he was a great leader that impacted many, many lives that people needed in Independence and around the area. So it was a great feat for, for our events. Um, the next one that I have is, this is a Miteira project with Colonial Mistad. It's something that the interns did, uh, before, and I decided to spec it up a little bit more next. Um, and so we did, uh, during a collaboration with F H T C. And what we did is, uh, City to Supper curriculum provided by Marion Pope Fischer. And the City to Supper, uh, was able to teach adults how to grow their own food. And it's a very easy curriculum to follow. I have seven active families, and what is interesting is that the parents were engaged. We were building the, the gardens for the parents, and within a week or two, the kids were asking like, where is our garden? We want our kids' garden. So it was a great impact, and now we're working with the kids' garden, so it's taking, uh, quite a bit. We're gonna be working, uh, the Colonial Mistad has part of the Ash Creek, uh, portion of it, so we're gonna work with them, with the watershed council to also work with that, with that side of the Ash Creek, for them to build that, have some walking time and put everything. So that's what we're doing there. The next one, uh, we did three public forums, and so, uh, we talk about sanctuary city and inclusive city, and also we talk about some of the role of the local police on their Oregon law. Uh, in these public forums, uh, we were talking about some of the factuals about sanctuary city and the Oregon state law, and also Sergeant Manuel was also accompanying for all three forums that we did, and it was a great impact to have a local police to be able to articulate what local police is doing in Spanish, able to make that connection. So it was a huge win for the trust with the police and the community to be able to enhance safety. It was a great learning experience, and, uh, we did it in Colonial Mistad, St. Patrick's Catholic Church, and O C D C, which is right here along. Um, so we did that, and that was a really great turnout. Um, so what we're doing now, um, there's a lot of things that we're doing. Uh, the Latino forum that just happened in June, um, it was a collaboration with Paul Cami, with Brent. I'm sure somebody would know who he is. Um, and the service providers to be able to help out with the outreach. Over fifty people came, and it was really great to see them all engaged and be able to figure out how they can do a better outreach. The next one would be, so tomorrow I'll be heading out to Ben, and we're gonna do the workshop. Um, David's gonna be there, and I have City of Tiger, Newburgh, Metro, and Woodburn. And my counterparts have been doing the same work, and we're gonna do a whole workshop. And essentially, it's about engaging community, capacity examples, building trust, and, uh, they will have different, each city will explain what they're doing in their own city, so they can see the differences. And some cities are bigger like Metro, some cities are small like Tiger, they're very doing this. Woodburn has a high density of Latino community in there, so they will have a variety of examples. Uh, the next thing that we're doing is the STEM Summer Camp, and this is funded by United Way, and we're collaborating with the Central School District. Uh, we're gonna start on, uh, June Monday, July thirty-first, and we're gonna go to Friday, August fourth. Uh, the kids that are going for second, third, and fourth grades will be able to have, and I would call it a stream, and stream meaning science, technology, reading, engineering, art, and math. And the reason is because, uh, collaborating with the library, it is very evident that the reading part is missing. Essentially, when we learn science, technology, and math, you need to do a lot of reading. So it's, we encourage that for people to be more active with the, with the library, and the library is doing amazing things on Mondays with Make Your Space, with David Placing Technology, so we're really leading the way in that. Um, so essentially, this is gonna be to stimulate the ideas of invention. We get the kids to think about they can invent something, and then they can sell it, and we're successful, uh, Summer Camp. Next. What else we're going to learn? Festival Informativo, I am co-hosting with Northwest Seniors and Disability Center. Uh, we decided to use the Festival Informativo as providing resources for the families, and uh, some of you might be aware of the triple squeeze in the financial sector telling that a lot of growing families are supporting their kids, but also supporting the seniors, so need with them. So we want to provide, uh, source, uh, resources for the whole family and focusing on the seniors, and see what kind of spaces they can have and what resources they can have, and talking about the heart conversations about making a plan for, um, the funeral or things like that. So they are great collaborating with me, and we'll do it on September tenth from twelve thirty to three P M, and you're more about going to join us.
Let me hear.
Yes. The plan aim would be to do an outside department, be able to have a kind of festival outside, and if it rains, you know, in Oregon, we might do it inside, so we're prepping for both. So hopefully we do that side. Um, I'm doing, uh, so dessert in Espanol, uh, so I'm active with Kimber, and we are creating dessert in Spanish. And so I'm gonna be shipped to Maryland to go and get the training by FEMA, that trained the trainer, so be able to do some trainings in that and collaborate, collaborate with Kimber to have the meeting that is ready for disaster. Um, and then we'll do some, uh, events to integrate the efforts of both teams. We have a team, we serve the eighteen, and then we'll have another team that is Spanish, um, uh, driven, and we'll combine them together, and we'll have these multicultural dessert efforts to provide the services. Or be able to train people and also, and also, by the way, they are doing training in the same language, which is very cool, and that's something that Kimber's really proud of, so we're leading the way in that as well. Next, so Miteira project, like I was showing you, so we did the Supper, City to Supper, and it is, uh, this is kind of, it's part of the community garden initiative. So this is a good highlight that we're gonna do. It's gonna take about three years to get this community up and running in a very efficient way, uh, but it will be a good example and model to see how other community gardens would be around the areas, maybe Hemmerkill around the Mount Fair Park as well. So I'm working with a new intern to work those details out. We'll have more work to do when, when we have more of an idea what community gardens we can have. So, uh, what we're doing right, uh, now, so the Round Table, we're working really hard to, to do that, um, and we're in the design stages. I was able to have a meeting last month, and they're gonna create its own name. We're gonna, uh, have their own vision and mission, and also, uh, the areas that are really, the work of interest that they have is, is very interesting because they really care about education, city engagement, and really just to keep up cultural relevance and enhance the community as a whole. And I'm having, I have a, about five people right now that are committed, and I'm still inviting three other people. Um, we try to get youth in there as well. Um, we're trying to get, uh, other business owners as well to be able to be part of this, so we can have a good perspective for all kinds of directions. And that we're doing for the Round Table. And we're exploring that unknown, and what I, what I mean by that is, what I'm trying, what we're gonna try to do, um, is to create the space to create the outlet. And some of the things that I have, um, we're having a long discussion is that to be able to have these intentional, uh, spaces, we want to invite professionals from all the sectors, and one of the, kind of, the unknown of it is that it's gonna be used to have Spanish in the main, uh, communication venue. And one of the main reasons of that is to allow our local community that speaks Spanish to be able to connect with professionals in business and other people that are also speak, speak Spanish as well, um, and they are able to go ahead and, um, so that we're able to make those connections and enhance networking with the community. But we wanted to do, create an ambiance for this, and so we're gonna have poetry, some poets there that's gonna be able to enjoy that in Spanish. And, uh, we're gonna have a guitarist that plays classical and, and, uh, traditional music, and also, uh, we're gonna highlight what's happening in Independence, and, uh, we want to invite the staff that is proficient in Spanish to also connect there. So that's the unknown, and I'll report back once we get it done and it starts flying, and we'll see how the networking works, and people will be able to say their opinion, if they like it or if they wanna continue to do this, or if they, they wanna go into a different direction. So that's what I have, and I'm collaborating with Ico, which is an Instituto Cultural Regoniano. It's a cultural institute of Oregon, and Arturo Vargas, he's a person that has been active with this type of Latino mixers, and be able to bring the dialogue to talk about the pushing questions of demographics, education, and health. And I think that's what I have for you.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay. I think I heard somewhere that in Independence about the Latino mix up, about thirty-three percent of our population?
Thirty-seven percent, solid.
Now, would that be in, uh, let's say ages up to eighteen, would it be the same ratio? Does anybody know? Or is it higher, lower?
I, I don't remember the numbers exactly. The district actually gave me their student population numbers, and it was definitely more than thirty, than thirty-seven percent, you know, forty-five-ish probably total.
The other question I have is, have you got like free reign to do whatever you wanna do? Or are you getting direction from somebody?
I'm definitely getting direction from my, the leaders over there.
Okay. Additional questions? Thank you for taking the time to share with us.
Thank you.
I think you're doing great stuff.
Thanks, lady.
Okay. It's sewage.
Kind of tough.
Well, I think the worst possible arrangement is to have me go last because I usually just really drag sometimes.
That's always bad, be number two.
This is on TV, so. No good deed never goes unpunished.
If, in your package, you may have a draft version of the presentation that we're making, but I, you know, we've got a couple of changes in there, and so, um, if you stand up, everybody, uh, doesn't need, uh, lose the PowerPoint.
Thank you, and let me properly welcome you to council.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's a pleasure to be here, and I want to, uh, see if we got the, the updated PowerPoint presentation on the screen. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to come and meet with you. For those of you, uh, who have sat through this in the past, uh, my apologies, there's some repetition of, uh, but this is a process that's been moving forward for twelve years, and, uh, now we're coming to some really, uh, some very specific, uh, improvements. For those of you who haven't been here, um, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I'm sure this is gonna be the highlight of your tenure as on the City Council, this is the sewer presentation. Uh, I've been working with the city staff, uh, since nineteen ninety-three on infrastructure prob, projects, uh, and, uh, most of that time has been with the sewer system. So I have a, a special fondness for Independence because I've had an opportunity to see the city go through quite a transformation in population growth. Uh, and like I said, we've been, we're moving toward this for the last twelve years. Uh, there's some very important, uh, proposed capital improvements that I think are gonna be necessary to take the city into the, the next two decades and beyond. Uh, so to begin with, if we go over to the, the first slide, uh, we talk about the sewer system, this is just kind of a, a primer or review of the, of the sewage system in Independence. It consists of the collection system, system of gravity pipes, and, uh, of course, manholes, pump stations, and pressure lines that all pump to the wastewater treatment facility in Independence, those are the lagoons, which are now, you know, in the middle of town. When they were first built, they were on the edge of town. We've grown around them. Uh, that's something to keep in mind. Um, go on to the next slide, and I'll come back to both of those facilities in a minute. Uh, as I mentioned, we're go, we've been spending the last twelve years, uh, and we've been moving through a system of documents, and you're gonna see two different wordings here for master planning documents. The first is wastewater master plan. That's, that's where we take a look at it about every ten to twenty years, and we forecast out the population growth, here are the capacities of the, the different components of the system, and, and where are we gonna begin run up out of capacity, where are we gonna start seeing stresses or failures in the system? That was wrapped up in two thousand and five, and we hit three key components, and you'll, you'll hear these tonight. First, we're running out of summer storage capacity. During the summertime, our permit does not allow us to discharge the Malano River, so all of the, uh, uh, it's, rather, to the ponds and the lagoons is stored between June first and November first, and nothing can be discharged. So we're running out of that storage capacity. Not surprising those were built in nineteen seventy-four. Um, the second is we're running out of treatment capacity, and that's the biological treatment. We just, we're to the point now where population grows, where we have so much, uh, organic load that we really have reached the limit of the ability of those lagoons to treat. We're not violating permit, but we knew we were headed to this point. And the third is there are key components of the collection system, not all of them, but a few of them, that are starting to reach their capacity, or they've been in service so long they need to be replaced. So that came out of that wastewater master plan, and that's where we were looking at it. D E Q said thank you for telling us about it. What they really require is that we do a facilities plan, and that's the term you see up there in green, sanitary sewage facility plan. At that point, we go through and we do a very detailed analysis, and we look at several alternatives to address those problem areas. Cost, that's the benefit to the community, and then we move forward with a recommended solution. And that was adopted, uh, by resolution by the council in two thousand and fifteen. D E Q grew it, and we've been moving forward with that since then. So, um, you'll hear me refer to the wastewater master plan and the facilities plan, and I just want to make sure that that, that clarification was there. Last comment before we move on to the other slides. Uh, if you look back up at the very top, the last time that we did a facilities plan where we really looked at doing some improvements was nineteen ninety-six, and that was all on the collection system. And if you were around here at that time, uh, anytime we had a rainstorm, we had sewage bubbling down the manholes and, uh.
My basement.
That's, and basements. Uh, as a result of that facilities plan, we did a citywide improvement, and we haven't had, uh, still, uh, had a manhole since then. And, uh, so that just tells you, you know, it's been twenty years, that's the, that's the horizon of a planning document.
Why does it say fifteen, twenty fifteen? They're exactly the same. It's the one's an update, but the update came before the facilities plan in twenty fifteen. What am I missing?
Which update? Oh, the update ninety-six?
Yeah.
Um, what you don't see before that was that there was a, a, a earlier facilities plan that was written by another engineering company in the late nineteen eighties.
But, but there's been another one written in two thousand and fifteen, right?
Yeah. And that, that, the two thousand and fifteen one, uh, was, was addressing what was identified in the wastewater master plan.
Okay.
So the facilities plan is just where you drill into the specific improvement. So the facilities plan is just where you drill into the specific improvements that come out of your master plan. We were having to hold a set of problems.
Don, the second facilities plan was not an update to the prior facilities plan?
Never has been.
It was facilities plan that was planned by the master plan.
We had a whole new set of problems that we were looking at, so that's why we called it new, I didn't want. Flipping down to the next slide, that's the collection system. That was a result of, and you can see the lagoons are in the center of it and we have all the different basins and with the different colors. They all drain the five, one of five major pump stations and that was reconfiguration that we did in nineteen ninety-eight as a result of facilities plan update. But that's basic configuration is again, the lagoons are in the center. On the next slide, you'll see the lagoons, we zoom in an aerial there. Right now, all of the pump stations come up to the center at the top of the picture and they discharge to either cell number one or cell number two. And then they move through sequentially into number three, number four. After about thirty days then, being in there where the microbes have been eating the organics, they go out to the chlorine contact chamber. We chlorinate it to kill the pathogens, disinfect it. Now, as of December, we dechlorinate that so that by the time it goes out to the river, we don't have any chlorine residual that might infect the river aquatics. And you can also see, just for reference, is that down, you see that blue line coming through, City of Monmouth and Independence share an asphalt to the river. So they come through and join ours and on out it goes. And again, those lagoons form two functions. One is the treatment, the organic treatment and the other is the storage. So just for population and the colors aren't my best efforts in terms of graphic display, but what I tried to show, if you look at in two thousand and seventeen, we have a population of nine thousand two hundred and fifty. If you go back to nineteen ninety-five, which was just prior to the last facilities plan, we had four thousand eight hundred. So you can see we've had about a ninety percent increase, almost, almost double, not quite double, the population. If you go back to nineteen seventy-five, that was just the last time that the treatment plant was expanded. Three thousand two hundred and sixty-two people. So we're not quite three times that population. So we've gotten a very good life out of the existing treatment facility when you look at those population numbers. And then on into the future, of course, we're growing at a rate of just shy of two percent. So it's going to get increasingly, the increase just accelerates in this slide. So as I mentioned, the three requirements, the storage in the summertime. So we looked at it, the facilities plan, and we said, it's time to change our approach. We can't keep building more and more lagoons. I'll show you in a minute that if we did, by the time we got to twenty years out from now, we would be three times the area of lagoons. We'd really start to chase our tail on that one. So we investigated something that affected the community and just the overall valley and that's to do a spray irrigation in the summertime on agricultural fields. And the technical term at DEQ now is recycled water facility. We also looked at treatment options and after looking at several of them, we're suggesting that in phase two, we build a membrane bioreactor treatment plant. It's a much more compact, much more efficient process than it can. And the third recommendation was to go after some of the critical collection system components. That includes a couple of pump stations, some of the gravity sewers and some additional rehabilitation to try to keep on top of the stormwater that's getting into our sanitary system. So what does that, where am I referring to or how bad is it with the summer storage? The lagoons were designed to provide us fifty-two million gallons of capacity. Right now, we're seeing flows in the order of seventy-three million gallons. And so for the last five years, we have had to release early. So we note by DEQ in October, a couple of times in September, that we're going to release early to the river. That is technically a violation of our permit. DEQ is aware that we're moving forward and they have not placed any enforcement action on us. They've been gracious in that effect, but they have noted, sent letters to us telling us that something has to be done. And you can see that as we move forwards with the projected volumes, it increases not in a straight line, but exponentially. And so that's where we're looking at the spray irrigation. Treatment capacity, we've got fifty-one acres of lagoon surface and with that treatment process, we're dependent on that surface to give us the oxygen exchange with the atmosphere and microbes that do the work. And so there is a theoretical limit on what we can actually treat with that. And you look at what each person in town on average contributes to it. That lagoon surface can handle about between eighty, eight thousand four hundred and twenty people and nine thousand two hundred and ninety-seven. That's just running the numbers through. Right now, we got a population nine thousand two hundred and fifty. As expected, we're right at that limit. We have not had violations on our permit, but we're on the cusp. So that's the recommendation is that we expand that capacity as the next phase. And then the third item there, as I mentioned, the pump station, the collection system rehab and we do have several items in there. There are a few pump stations along Lee Street is another, out by the lagoons and a handful of other items. So in the collection system, this is a slide out of the master plan that was done in two thousand and five and that's where we did the capacity analysis. So there was a method to our madness when we said, okay, where are we going to do these improvements in the collection system? We have addressed some of them and in the intervening twelve years, we have identified a couple more. So as I said, I just wanted to point out there's some numbers behind this and we do have a pretty good long-range plan. I mentioned the facilities plan, we go through that facilities plan. This is something that's required by DEQ and that's why they have to approve it. And that's where we're saying, this is the best technology or this is the best, the most appropriate approach for the city to tackle the problems that we're going to be facing. It's an engineering and planning document. We look at the current collection and treatment facilities. We evaluate alternatives and then we do an analysis that looks at the most cost-effective and the most beneficial environmentally appropriate to the community. And typically looking at a twenty-year planning equation for that. So three problems again. What came out of that facilities plan is we said we need to change our approach to summer storage. We can't keep building bigger lagoons. We recognize it is a potential market, it's a benefit to agriculture. It's a market to industry if we treat that stuff. There are some industries, we don't have any in Independence now, but there are some that could use that as process water. It's treated clean enough for that. As we come into and change and add the membrane bioreactor treatment, we get such a clean effluent and we get such a clean process that we could use that for irrigation in town, for parks, for landscaping and industrial areas. What that means to the city is you get a double wind. That's global water you don't have to develop. So rather than building big, more volume storage, we said, let's change our approach and that's why we're looking at spray irrigation. Treatment, we looked at, I'll just briefly show you the numbers on that. This is taken straight out of the facilities plan. The first three are, we looked at aerating the lagoons. We looked at coming in with an activated sledge or an oxidation ditch. Those are traditional plants that you see with the big clarifiers. And then we looked at two more recent technologies, sequencing batch reactor or the membrane bioreactor. And we, we, we'll head up to the next slide, you'll see we did, we estimated the cost to build them and operate them for twenty years. And you'll see at the very bottom, the one we're recommending is a membrane bioreactor. That's a little bit more than alternative number one, which is the lagoon aeration. Many ways you could say that they're essentially the same cost. The MBR has some very significant advantages. I mentioned that it's cleaner effluent, it can be used in the future for irrigating in town and recycling water. Probably the greatest benefit though is it can be developed in modules. So you don't have to build it all at once and you'll see in the basing plan, we're talking about building it and then matching it to the population growth. So those were the numbers behind it and that's how it came out. So now, now you see the numbers, you see the methodology briefly. How do you actually implement that? And one approach, we've got about twenty million dollars worth of capital improvements and you have all those bases. One approach is to do it all at once and we're suggesting that you not do that. Not only is it a big hit to the community, it also means that you run the risk of oversizing and you're paying on that as the stuff is corroding and losing its useful life. So the first phase and the most immediate is to tackle that summer storage, which is developing the spray irrigation. And that is critical as well as some of the collection system elements. The second is developing the first module of the MBR, the membrane bioreactor. And that means it would be operational in two thousand and twenty. And as I pointed out before, we're theoretically out of capacity and that would be appropriate timing for that. But that means that we could start pursuing funding this summer. And then the third phase is looking out there and adding additional treatment. And that's right now, we've said, population projections say that you're going to need that in twenty thirty. But that can be adjusted both in size and when you do it to match for the populate, what actual population growth you realize. So we tried to phase this in a manner that it's affordable and also matches your population growth. So last three slides for me. Here's the summary of the cost. The wastewater recycled water facility, we have an estimated total cost of three point nine million. The collection system improvements, again, this is where the operational next, we build next summer, operational two thousand and nineteen, is an additional three point three million. That's seven point two million total for this first phase. I just slid this in here so you got a visual of what we're talking about with the recycled water. Just right down at the bottom, you can see the lagoons. You can see the plant river on the far right side. We're talking about pumping, detreated, disinfected effluent during the summer up to agricultural properties just north of the city's UGB and we've been in discussion with that property on. Now, the alignment of that pipe getting up there, we still got quite a bit of flexibility as a conceptual alignment right now. Next slide. Phase two then is to build first base, first module of the treatment expansion. And that would be, we estimate the cost to be eight point one million for that. And then phase three, I'm sorry, to give you a visual of what that looks like, put it into the picture. That's an MBR and we're talking about something about double that size for the first phase. You can see it's a much smaller footprint than the locals. That's, that's how they design it. Phase three then is expanding on the MBR and again, that's to catch whatever population growth is we're estimating right now. If you continue at the growth rate that you've been experiencing, that would be an additional five point one million dollars in today's dollars. So that's, that's the summary of sewerage system, the sewerage system in Independence. Out of the process, we've gone to plan for it, somewhat a cost and a recommended phasing approach. All of this has been presented in the past, but we're reaching the point now where how do we actually implement that? And I think that's where the next slide is for John, talk a little bit about the financial.
Any technical questions at this point?
Have you taken into account the cost per gallon or however you do it, cost per cubic meter? I didn't see anything that talked about that, the ongoing cost.
For operation, sure. We have that in the facilities plan. I don't know what that is off the top of my head.
Because it might be that one of them is really good and gives us this clean water that nobody will want to drink. And, but it's possible.
And if you go back to that table that had the dollars in it, I think we're back.
The twenty million one?
Yeah. If you look at, it's that right there. Those, what you see over on the right-hand side is the present worth where we've taken future dollars and moved it back to today and that includes the capital cost and the ongoing operation maintenance for each of those. So, so what that represents is both. So not only does it have least cost, you're very close to it, but it has that ability to be digitalized and built in very, very well.
When you, maybe you'll monetize the product.
Maybe you'll monetize the product.
Sure.
Yeah. When you, when you give up that figure, did you, did you plan on the module of phasing into those modules in that EQ?
That figure is what would take to construct all three phases.
And that will totally take, then we will no longer be using the lagoon system for cleaning the water, which would be for storage only?
At this point, what we've sized it, and that's a very important question because right now, those lagoons are out of capacity, but they still provide a tremendous amount of treatment. So getting rid of them means we would have to build much, much larger MBRs. And so we're not proposing at this point, that's certainly an option, but it would be considered more money to abandon those lagoons and then build much bigger treatment facilities.
So they'll work together.
The hybrids.
Exactly.
Okay. And also the, you talked about cleaning the water, is that allowed to be discharged to the river at any time or do we still have that restriction of discharging in the summer?
That's a good point because that's been a topic of discussion for over twenty-five years with DEQ camp. And the short answer is that they won't allow us to discharge this arm. So even though we're cleaner, we try to push that, but the process to get that up to chain means we'd be plowing new ground and not sure as a program.
I know that's a discussion that's been happened in the legislature with discharge and because we're not the only people dealing with this kind of stuff.
Yeah. I would say, I know, I had, thirty years ago, we were, when I was working with Monmouth on their expansion of the lagoons and we had the discussion with DEQ and at that point, they were saying maybe and then they were saying absolutely no, ten years later. It's not to say that that won't happen in the future, but right now, we would be fighting that battle our own.
Okay. Let's keep moving. Thank you. Good evening, welcome to council.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here. My name again is John Peterson. I work for Piper Japery in Portland and I've been the city's municipal advisor for a year and a few months. But I've been in the public finance business for about fourteen years and have advised on recycled water financings in the past. But I'm really just addressing this last bit in terms of how we pay for this. We have on the slide financing alternatives, a couple of purposefully low interest alternatives, which are the Oregon Infrastructure Authority and some state revolving fund homes through the Department of Environmental Quality. In addition to just public market options, could we go to a, to a direct borrowing from a bank or another financial institution or could we offer bonds? And I guess the good news in the, in the current environment, I think as long as I've been in this business, we've been telling people rates are going to go up and they've gone up a couple of times and always so far have come back down. So actually, right now, the Oregon Infrastructure Authority would carry a higher rate than what the, than what the city would get on either a bank loan or a bond. And the anticipated rate on a state revolving loan fund financing is somewhat lower than what we would anticipate with a bond, although all of these things are moving pieces. Generally speaking, my experience is that if, if speed and certainty of execution is the priority, then typically you want to avoid the state and federal agencies. But if, if in fact, lowest cost is the, is the highest priority, then it makes. But if, if in fact, lowest cost is the, is the highest priority, then it makes sense to take a more measured approach, looking at all the, all the potential options. I think the city's done a very good job of exploring that. We had, going back in the late last fall, what the, what the state agencies call a "one stop," where the various state funding sources will kind of sit down with you and talk about what they can lend, how much it would cost. In fact, it wasn't just the state, I think we had a federal agency there as well. And, and at the time, it seemed like, certainly from the perspective of the folks, the agents on the side of the state funding agencies, they, they thought they would be able to provide grant support for the project, which, on a blended basis, when you add a grant, then the Oregon IFA is no longer the highest cost alternative, it becomes a very attractive alternative. As, as it has turned out, the City of Independence, you know, possibly through good location, possibly through good management, however it has happened, the growth of the city has made that, by their metrics, we're not disadvantaged enough to get a grant, unfortunately. Well, but fortunately, I mean, it's, it's not bad to not be disadvantaged. At any rate, in the, in the current market, an estimate from the DEQ representative was, was that their borrowing rate was, was in the range of 2% right now. I've just done a financing for a lower-rated, a lower-rated city through a bank that, that came in just under $2.60. You could expect a bond financing to be somewhere in that, in that same range, depending on how long you were borrowing for. And then the Oregon IFA rate without a grant is a 3.78, so they're, they're kind of a non-starter at the moment. But at any rate, my firm, my firm has expertise in getting the money you need, and I believe there's going to be additional discussion through the rate study of looking at, you know, what the future revenues are going to need to be in order to pay for the various phases of capital development.
Questions? Absolutely, we need to put this all together.
We're going to announce we're on getting a rate study done. We're going out for proposals tomorrow to start, we're putting that together, get proposals. We're hoping to have a completed rate study somewhere about the beginning of September. That is about in alignment with when DEQ would like us to have our agreements ready to go, ready to sign. So we'll know what we need and get a better projection of, of rates for your, for your approval ahead of going for the finance, the final financing.
I suppose from, from my perspective, maybe the good news in all this is that the difference in interest rate between DEQ or a bank loan or a bond is relatively small, so the financing cost at this, at this point in time, the interest cost isn't a huge element, but really, it's just a matter of overall project cost, and then how quickly do you get things done? How quickly do you repay?
I'm not sure who the right person to answer this is, it may be each of you. I just love, love a confirmation that, well, what we're looking at here is a normal, regular approach to, to doing suburbs on a regular schedule. We're not out, we're not an outlier here, that this is the regular way that things like this happen, and the time schedules that they happen. We haven't missed anything, we're just moving along. You have a very thoughtful, prudent approach. Would that be a fair characterization? I, do you see where I'm coming? I'm just kind of looking for confirmation.
I'll start with this, I guess this is, this is the norm, I've been in eight cities, this is absolutely the normal, you know, normal approach to infrastructure financing that I have seen. We have had this, as you have Don, as Sheriff, we've had this in the plans, and the council's had heads up from this. These needs for quite some time, it was just driven by the population growth. We have built this into our current rate work that was done a number of years ago. Now it's really kind of time to check, you know, we have to do a little bit of checking to see, you know, what has changed, and things have changed, we've grown at a different rate, revenue streams aren't always entirely what you expect them to be, so you're always making adjustments on that. This, this rate study is now coming together to go, "Okay, let's see what we've checked before versus where we, where we need to be." We don't expect, you know, we don't expect to outrage you or shock you with this information. I think this information is, hopefully, will be fairly consistent with everything you've seen in the past. And this is basically how planning and, you know, infrastructure planning is supposed to go, and everything I've ever seen.
Sir?
After that, I'd say that Independence has been very proactive, I think that's a credit to the staff and the council. The first slide I showed you, right at the timeline, if you went back to 1996, where that facilities plan update was done, that was done under duress. The city at that point was under stipulation and final order, which meant that if it wasn't cleaned up by a certain time, that you would have faced increasingly high, increasing fines, you know, each time that you updated. And so the fact that since that was completed, that problem was taken care of, that we moved forward with master planning, facilities planning, and we've really lined up the dominoes in a very appropriate manner.
Great. Additional questions? Because I know staff will be available as, as you chew on this over the coming weeks, and we look forward to...
We'll be coming back to you both for the financing and for the rate work, so this is just, really just to sort of get you a good, better understanding of what that conversation will be about.
Do you agree with the projected population growth over the next three to four years?
Yeah, 2% a year at this point in time is, is pretty reasonable. We grew 5% last year.
So 2% is reasonable.
It's not, it's not high enough, if that's...
Is it high enough? I mean, is 2% high enough? My thought was, is DEQ just a pushover thing where, "Don't worry about what they say"?
No, no, I mean, the population...
The reason I ask is, you already told us we can't dump any more water out this summer, and, and yet our population's already at capacity, and we're not growing at 2%, we're growing higher than that.
DEQ is not a pushover, they only mention about DEQ as being...
Were they going to make us stop flushing?
Yeah. Well, no, but they, well, they could, they could, they could impose a building more time. And then also, your population goes close to zero. That's not where we want to be.
Right, I agree with that.
So, but that's, that's the outside risk. The other outside risk is they, they can't, they have the power before they can open the system and make us make improvements. I've been under that, that threat a couple of times in a couple of cities. So, and that too is within, you know, is not an unreasonable expectation for DEQ. They expect you to take responsibility, as we are here, if you show mature...
My point was that if we're looking at 2%, and we're trying to base our timing on that, couldn't we be off by a factor of 100%?
Again, it's possible, but I think, you know, 2% is played out historically pretty hard. And going forward, you know, you'll have bumps in that like you did last year, but at some point, time to sort around and build in options as well, and the economy changes. So over the course of time, as you build some battles, but that 2% is proven to be a fair factor. Past performance has drawn the appropriate indicator of future performance. That is a higher rate than most other strategies.
Additional questions at this time? We'll have, we'll get the opportunity on last, so we're the conversations. Okay, without objection?
Yes, sir.
Oh yeah, thank you. Any announcements that we need to make?
Yes. Guess what? There's an eclipse coming. And I just wanted to let you know that the Independence Downtown Association will be offering ghost walks during the eclipse at 5:00, 6:00, and 7:00 on Sunday night, and on Saturday, there will be a Total Eclipse of the Heart fundraiser, and it is to raise money to put AED devices in necessary places, and I believe one of those is in a police car for the City of Independence.
Good stuff. Great. Additional announcements?
Lorik, did you talk with John Cooper about bonds for, what, where are we on that?
He just returned from vacation on Monday, and we did, we spoke briefly about it, and then he followed up with Dawn to see if they had done their due diligence. It sounds to me like they're good to go. So now it's, we'll be in contact with the underwriter.
It would be the city now, right?
Yeah.
Talking to the underwriter?
Right, yeah, yeah. So as long as, as long as mine is ready to sign off, then we could, great to go, and it sounds like they are.
Does everyone know what you're talking about? Why don't you fill in the blank?
So the due diligence that was missing, and they were unable to sign off on, when we tried to do the refunding on, on their bonds last time, which was...
Let's go backwards, which bonds are we talking about?
So it's the 2010 A and B. A is tax exempt, B is taxable bond, so they've got two sets of bonds.
Minet.
Minet. These are minet bonds.
Thank you.
And, okay. They were uncomfortable with signing off on saying that all 100% of the bond proceeds at that time were used for, were not used for public, public use, or, do you, do you recall what that?
Yeah, I think that's...
I'm not sure on the terminology on what that was.
Well, there are a couple of things you'd want to have confirmed. One is, is that all of the tax exempt proceeds have been used for qualified public purposes. There's a de minimis exception of, you know, a very small percentage that can go to other, to other things. And then the, the other question would be whether or not all the proceeds had already been spent.
Right, okay.
Because there's a calculation, if there are any unspent proceeds, then inner refunding is a way that those are treated for tax purposes in calculating the arbitrage to yield on the new bonds in order to make sure that nobody's getting any unfair advantages over the IRS.
So is the private use part of it that they were unsure of? And so they, you know, they engaged their attorney to do the research and all of that, and it sounds to me like they are in fact ready to sign off on that.
So things are moving forward the way they need to?
Yes, yes.
That's the answer we need?
Yeah. Is that ready for the test if we were back in?
Well, to save us from the test, unless there's other announcements, somebody move to adjourn?
Some of them.
All in favor?
Hi.
And John?